Safe streets, vibrant neighborhoods, successful business and commerce. These are things that make a healthy community. We are a diverse community, rural, suburban, urban. A multitude of languages and ethnicities, ages and experiences. We are a collaborative community. Public-private partnerships make us a model community that others want to follow. It is what makes us unique. It is what makes us strong. The employees of Kent County reflect our diversity and seek to serve our communities.
People in this county, in this area, we wrap our arms around each other. We come together to collaborate, to solve problems. We're all working for the good of the whole. And I think that's wonderful. And you can see it. You can see it as you drive around Kent County.
Our impact starts the day a baby is born and a birth certificate is issued. To protecting children from deadly diseases through vaccination, to the public safety and justice provided by law enforcement and the courts, to offering veterans services and caring for the elderly. Every day, we work to keep our communities robust.
I think if you are somebody who is interested in serving your community, in building a strong knowledge base and a good group of people to work with, then the county is one of your best employment opportunities out there. It's been completely rewarding in every way I could possibly explain for 26 years. And I feel like I grow every single day still today.
Leading these dedicated employees are 19-member Board of Commissioners and our county administrator/controller, along with our elected officials and appointed department directors, placing emphasis on civic involvement, quality housing, vibrant neighborhoods, and strong solid infrastructure to allow businesses to thrive. Professional, dedicated, collaborative, and innovative.
Behind the scenes collaboration between foundations, charitable organizations, nonprofits, for-profit businesses, public sector demonstrated through the county, the city of Grand Rapids, the townships, all the cities and the villages in our area. If we don't come together, then we will not have the strength that we have today. And I only hope to build upon that.
Our aim is to make our communities the best they can be. We are involved in exciting development projects, sustainable recycling programs, and creative progressive prevention programming. We partner with elected officials impacting policy ideas that become great achievements. We seek opportunities to reach out into the community and offer our services to help our residents make Kent County thrive.
Our relationship is solid, both from a staff standpoint at the county level, as well as the Board of Commissioners. And they understand what we do and the benefits that we can do for the community. And vice versa, we couldn't do what we do without the help of Kent County.
While most of us are busy running our lives, Kent County's elected officials, administrator/controller, and over 1,600 employees are serving the communities where we live our lives, so we can all have a place we are proud to call home. Kent County, its life well-run.
Good morning. We're going to get started. I'm a minute behind, two minutes behind, sorry. Good morning, good morning. Welcome to the Kent County Board of Commissioners for Thursday, June 17th. We want to welcome everyone here and call the meeting to order. Chief Deputy Rob McCumber, can you please call the roll?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners Woodin.
President.
Womack. Voorhees.
President.
Bonk. Tallon.
Here.
Vice Chair Steck.
Here.
Commissioner Sparks.
Charlie.
Skaggs.
Here.
Saulfeld.
Here.
Ponstein.
Here.
Morgan.
Here.
Melton.
Present.
Coleman.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Hennessy.
Bukowski.
President.
Breeby.
Here.
Antor.
Here.
Chair Walter.
Here.
Madam Chair, you have 16 present and three absent. You have a quorum.
Thank you, Mr. McCumber. On to item three, invocation. I'll call Commissioner Coleman to give our invocation today.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to introduce this morning Pastor John Geeny, a personal friend of mine and the pastor at Faith Baptist Church down on 44th Street. Welcome Pastor.
Thank you. Let's pray together. Father, your word tells us to pray for those who are in positions of authority, and pray for peace. Father, I ask that you would give each of the people represented here wisdom to make good decisions. I pray that you'd give them integrity and honesty in their conversations. I pray for each person here to value all human life, from the youngest to the oldest, that they would not ever see anybody being less than human because of education, or wealth, or poverty. Lord, I pray that in everything that they do, they consider all people worthy of being part of the decision-making process that happens here, to honor all life and to give all life value. And so I pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you so much, Mr. Coleman and guests. And I love your accent.[365.02][365.02](Laughter). All right, we are on to item five, Special Order of Business. And I will welcome Steve Warren from the Road Commission to come up and keep us... Oh, I'm sorry. Cindy. Come on up.
Good morning. For those of you that don't know me, I'm Cindy James. I'm Vice Chair of the Road Commission. Just wanted to thank you for the opportunity to be on the agenda this morning. We're always excited to talk about the great things that are happening at the Kent County Road Commission. Before we start in letting Steve get digging into the details, I just wanted to share some of our board philosophy, and specifically how we set policy that equips and empowers the Road Commission staff to be successful. The first of our guiding principles is our culture. The Road Commission has long embraced a culture of customer service. We are the second-largest road commission in Michigan, yet we have retained a small organization feel which we believe is vital to being accessible and responsive to the needs of our community. We are nimble organization, which is what we have to be living in the West Michigan community, dealing with the weather and so forth. Certainly, it's been a challenge this past winter. We have over 9,700 Facebook followers and 2,000 Twitter followers, which rely on us to keep them apprised of all the weather conditions and road closures and so forth. The second for our organization is that we need to remain relevant. For us, this means being connected to those that we serve and best understand and meet with their needs. And when needs change, we need to meet them. Keeping the organization relevant is not something that just happens. It requires strong relationships with our townships, who we view as our clients. It requires strategic planning and intentional collaboration, as well as a focus on continuous improvement. And third is our principle of fiscal responsibility. We set a goal to have our unfunded liabilities of OPEB eliminated by 2019. This is a goal we have achieved, and we're very excited. In closing, I know, in closing, we believe the culmination of these principles will ultimately position the Kent County Road Commission for success. Thank you for the opportunity to serve on the state's best road commission under the directorship and leadership of the state's best director, Steve Warren. End of that. Steve?
Thank you, Cindy.
Thank you, Cindy. It was very nice. And thank you all for the opportunity to speak to you today. It's one of the things I look forward to every year. And joining me, well, actually, is another one of our Road Commissioners, Rob Verhulen, our most recently-appointed Road Commissioner. And thank you very much. I've known Rob for many years and worked with him collaboratively and very effectively in the legislature. Also joining me is some of our staff. Macy Barczewski, our Finance Director, Steve Ruse, our Equipment Director, Tim Hogsmann, Director of Traffic and Safety. Back there is Wayne Harrell. Wayne is our Director of Engineering and Assistant Managing Director, along with Jerry Byrne. We call him Mr. Hollywood because he's on TV more than, I think, Terry DeBoer. But Jerry does a great job not only directing our Maintenance Division, but I think very effectively representing us to the media. Maura Lammers is also with us, and she's our Communications Director, excuse me, Program Manager. But I think Cindy mentioned reaching out through other media, Twitter, Facebook, something that is foreign to me, but you know, it's the way people want to communicate. And I think we're reaching out to the community very effectively in that regard. Speaking of reaching out to the community, we are engaged in a strategic planning update process. I'm giving you a little bit of a preview of that document. It's not yet on our website, but will be soon. But I think it does a good job, this slide, of sort of highlighting some of the major things that we're working on. And it's more of a description of where we see ourselves in the long-range future, looking out 2040, 2045. And I want to interject, as I go through these comments, the progress that we're making on these sort of visionary statements. Of course, right at the top of the list, we're talking about road conditions. And you hear a lot about that right now in the legislature, the condition of our statewide network. And I'm going to talk a little bit about some of the things that sets Kent County apart from the rest of the state. We're probably one of the few road commissions in the state that by 2025 will achieve 90% of our primary road network in good or fair condition. It's something that many other road commissions and the DOT and others are trying to strive for, but with the existing dollars that we have coming in, we're on pace to hit that. I would caution you, though, that when we talk about road conditions in 90-10, it relates to just the surface rating. And there is much more that needs to be done rather than just maintaining that surface. While that's a priority, there are structural things that need to be done to eliminate seasonal weight restrictions, traffic conditions such as traffic volumes, accidents. So it's more than just surface condition, but we're on pace to hit that mark by 2025. Our townships are a great partner. And I think another thing that sets us apart is the relationship that we have with our township partners. I'm going to talk about our cost-sharing program as we get through this. I mentioned structural capacity. Our objective, should we get additional dollars, is to eliminate seasonal weight restrictions on another 115 miles of our county primary network. This would set Kent County at a level that is much different than the rest of the state. Of course, we know that there's many users on our network. It's not just people driving cars. It's people that are walking, biking, pushing their baby carriage. So it's important that we consider the context at which these corridors go through. And so we work collaboratively with the county, with the state, with our township partners to make sure that as we develop these projects, that we're considering these other users. Excuse me. Like it or not, we are in a high-tech environment, and there's a lot of deployment going on right now, anticipating the development of autonomous vehicle technology. And it's something that we're aware of, that we're engaged in, and we're actually beginning to develop that infrastructure on our system. And finally, we couldn't do any of this without a highly qualified and trained staff. We have about 240 full-time employees. At this time of year, that balloons to over 300, with about 60 part-time or seasonal workers. And as we see the demand for services go up, additional dollars to invest in our roads, that takes additional people. But we highly respect a diverse workforce, and we're working throughout the community to try to develop and add to that diversity. So let me begin, just talk about road conditions for a second. I mentioned that we're on track by 2025 to reach 90% of our primary roads in good or fair condition. What this means is that the surface is in good shape. It's free of potholes, generally repaved, or sometimes with a surface treatment such as a chip seal. But it's generally what the people see, what they drive on, what they experience. And so one of our first objectives is to hit that 90-10 goal on our primary roads by 2025. The bars, the different colored bars on that, show what our targets are per year. In the orange, in the fact that these last three years, we've exceeded those targets. And we're on pace this year with our budget to exceed our targets once again. But still, in the upper right-hand corner, you can see that about 29% of our road network is in need of some structural improvement. This is sort of the effect of underfunding investment in roads and bridges over the last 15 to 20 years, that a significant portion, still about 30%, of our network needs some heavy-duty types of improvements. Reconstruction, resurfacing, that type of thing. And so we use a mix of fixes when we plan and select road improvements. Anything from, again, reconstruction, resurfacing. It really depends on the nature of the road, the demand for the road, the context at which it travels through, and those things. Here's an example of just this year, some of the major projects. It gives you a little bit of an idea, not only what our targets are, but what our budget has included. Now, these are lane miles, and not to get too deep into the technical woods here, but when we measure our productivity, our targets, how many dollars we're investing, we usually do it on a per-lane-mile basis. So you think of a two-lane roadway, one mile long, that's two lane miles. That same road that's four lanes wide and one mile long is four lane miles. So when you look, not to confuse people, but when you look at some of the numbers that we have on here, they're in lane miles. But we've got probably 256 lane miles just on our primaries that we're planning to do this year. In terms of percentage, that's probably exceeding 15% of our network that we'll be touching. We did about 12% of our network last year. Again, we're on pace to make some significant improvements here in the next few years. Want to talk a little bit about something we call our Economic Support Network. On the far left, the roads highlighted in the darker gray, this represents probably the highest-volume county primary roads in Kent County. They're the ones that provide service to trunk lines, to other connections within the cities, what we call our Economic Support Network. Right now, in the middle illustration, you can see that we have 189 of those miles of that 303-mile network that are not subject to seasonal weight restrictions. And that has an economic effect on farm-to-market and manufacturing. And it's our objective to eliminate those, should we get additional money. There's about 114 miles of that network that need to be rebuilt to what we call a Class A standard. That's deeper subbase and deeper gravel base and thicker pavements, paved shoulders. So it's longer-term fixes that would help, again, support the economic development of Kent County. One of the other things that sets us apart is the fact that unlike many other parts of the state, where we see about 14% of bridges being structurally deficient, Kent County has 0% structurally deficient bridges on the county network. And this is a legacy that we inherited from investments made back in the '60s and '70s to rebuild much of our bridges. And the thing that we're still doing now is we have a dedicated bridge maintenance crew. And so those folks are doing the preventative maintenance to keep those bridges in good condition. And we're very proud of the fact that we have 0% structurally deficient. I mentioned townships. I am so proud of our staff and our relationship that we have with our township partners. If there's anything that sets Kent County apart, it's that collaboration, that cooperation that we have with local government. And we're, one of the things that sets us apart is that we have a very robust, generous, whatever you want to call it, cost-sharing program. Generally, they bring a dollar to us to do improvements on local roads, and by law, there's a shared responsibility there. So we've got 1,300 miles of local roads. That's 2,600 lane miles. Many of these are paved, but there's about 335 miles, center-line miles, of unpaved roads. So we have a cost-sharing formula that when there's improvements, regraveling, or some repaving, or chip seal-type work on those local roads, that we're doing so in a collaborative way, in pretty much a 50-50 cost-sharing formula with the townships. And you can see that over the last five years or so, four years, that those township contributions have been increasing. And so we do a great job of working with them, and it's one of the more enjoyable parts of the job. I mentioned context-sensitive design. Generally, that means for us, a lot of work with townships, with the county, with the state, on developing non-motorized trails. But it's even more than that. It talks about, in the illustration there, I believe is on Cascade Road, and in the Cascade downtown, if you will, where we work with the township, they make investments, we can engineer those and design those into our projects, because we know that in some areas that they are looking for other things, pedestrian accommodation, sometimes landscaping or other things. So we work with them on that. We actually administer a lot of the grant funds that help to fund those. Technology, innovation. This is a picture, actually, of a controller at a signal, one of the new ones, but it looks like something that you might see in a fighter jet or something. The technology that's going into our system is amazing. And we're making accommodations for the fact that sometime, at some point, these signals will actually be communicating back and forth with autonomous vehicles. So we have to begin the process of building in that infrastructure now. For many years, we've worked with our regional partners on traffic signal optimization. That work continues, but we're seeing that as time goes on, we're seeing more and more demand for wireless technology, small cell communication within our right-of-way. Finally, our workforce. I've worked at the Road Commission for 30, a little over 30 years, 30 and a half years or so. And it's been my pleasure to work with these folks. They're dedicated, they're knowledgeable, and they do great work. At this point, again, we're looking at what the needs are for the future. We may have to make some adjustments. We eliminated or didn't fill a lot of jobs over the last few years due to the economy, but you know, we're taking a look at that right now. And so if you know anybody looking for a job, send them my way. With that, I'd be happy to take any questions. Hopefully, I got it in pretty close to my time.
Pretty close, pretty close.
Okay, all right, all right.
All right. One quick housekeeping note. The microphones have changed yet again. Hopefully, this is the last time. For us, arm-length challenge, you don't have to lean and hold the microphone. You can toggle on and toggle off, but make sure after you speak, you turn it off. So with that, questions, comments? Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to let you know how great it is to have you as a partner. So as a Commissioner, on a regular basis, I end up with phone calls, questions, potholes, projects, snow clearing issues, and all of that is a very simple answer from me. We, as a Board of Commissioners, appoint the Road Commission Board, and after that, they are a standalone entity that does a phenomenal job. Please contact Steve or Jerry. And then the best part about it is Steve and Jerry, then contact them. And it's prompt, and it's professional. And yes, it might not be the answer that these folks want to hear, but it's the answer. And with that, you have my gratitude, because it makes my life so much more pleasant. And I also want to say how present they are in our community. So as the member of the Commission here that sits on the Supervisors Group there, the Kent County Supervisors Association, the Kent County Road Commission has three seats there. And there is always a rep at that meeting as well, also trying to tie in and continue to communicate with the same folks that we're connected with. So thank you for being a phenomenal partner. And my favorite quote, just last moment, is, because Steve and I talked, when I first started, I did an interview with him, and "Good roads cost money, and bad roads cost more." So that is just, I think, a great message to make sure that everyone is aware of. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Voorhees.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, Steve, and Board members, staff. When I tell people I'm on the Board of Commissioners, "Oh, I have a road question for you." And so I do get a lot of questions regarding the Road Commission, and a big topic, especially through the last election. But I'm not going to swear about it. I'm just going to talk about it. This morning in our work session, we talked a bit about the trails, connecting the interurban and the rural trails. What percentage in your budget is dedicated or used for trail planning or laying? What's your involvement at the Road Commission?
There's a statewide requirement that, I believe it's 1% or 2%, that we're required to put into non-motorized travel. We far exceed that every year. One of the things that we do, and I believe we have about 300 miles or so of roads with paved shoulders, and that qualifies under that, so four-foot paved shoulder. But we go well beyond that in terms of, again, collaborating with, whether it be the county parks, DNR, with our townships, in adding to that, doing grant work, doing projects within our right-of-way. So probably the last few years, you know, we've probably been averaging over $2 million a year in non-motorized trail collaboration, if you will. That doesn't necessarily mean that $2 million that might otherwise go to roads are going into trails. These are usually dollars that are dedicated to that. But we do every year quite a bit of work on paved shoulder work. Not only does that help accommodate non-motorized travel, but it's good for the road. Having that four-foot paved shoulder adds some sort of lateral stability to the road. It keeps roads safer because there isn't that drop-off. For the people, residents, it gives them kind of a protected area either to pull off or to get mail out of their mailbox. So we see that as a win-win, both for the non-motorized community as well as maintaining better roads.
How do we, as the county, access funds for trailway projects?
Well, a lot of those dollars are sometimes required to actually go through the Transportation Agency, in that case, us. So our planners, engineers collaborate, help either the county or communities apply for, administer those funds. So there's both federal and state grant dollars available for that.
Thank you, Steve.
All right. Commissioner Skaggs.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Steve, Board members and staff. Two quick questions. One, you mentioned collaboration with local governments. And I know back when I was on the East Grand Rapids City Commission, we had entered into a partnership with you about joint bidding. Is that still going on? And what other cities are taking advantage of that opportunity?
Well, we probably lead the way in terms of bidding, joint purchasing. For example, on our SALT contract, most of the communities in Kent County go in on our SALT bid. We're able to bid independently, we're able to get usually better prices. So not only do the other cities participate with us in that, but even some of the adjoining road commissions. So yes, I mean, I think we lead the way, working on joint bidding for a number of different things. Road materials, sometimes surface treatments, specific projects. So yes, there's a lot of that collaboration that goes on, because generally, we're one of the major customers, and others can get... of the major customers, and others can get better prices if they join in on our bid process.
Yeah, great. Thank you for that work. I know that it's saved that city a large amount of money and allowed us to pave more roads. I will also not curse. The second thing is about 1500 Scribner, and I wondered if there was an update on that facility and the selling of that and that process.
Right. Yeah, 1500 Scribner. It sits on about 14 and a half acres of property. A couple years ago, we bought almost 30 acres, because at some point in the future, we need to expand the operation. We've been there 100 years. We're landlocked in terms of room to grow, the ability to build a new salt building, to expand our garage facility. So right now, the notice of sale of that property is off the books, if you will. It's not currently for sale, but the phone continues to ring with potential interest. But we've made the decision that we're not just going to sell that building and that complex just to move. I mean, we have to get what we feel is fair market value. So right now, we're, the notice of sale has been suspended. At some point in the future, the board will make a decision to probably reissue that at some point, depending on what we think the market trend is. But we're in no rush to move. I mean, while we could use a bigger facility, 1500 Scribner has served us well over, well, about 100 years. We went through a major update of that facility about 35 years ago. But again, it lacks some of the capacity that we need as we look forward in the future in terms of maintenance of our trucks, getting all of that expensive equipment under roof. We assemble, we basically develop our own snowplow trucks. We produce about six to eight trucks every year, where we buy the components and our mechanics assemble them. We're limited in our capacity to do that right now. So for many reasons, a larger, more modern vehicle equipment area is needed. That said, we need to downsize the administrative offices. There isn't as many people there as there used to be in the administrative side. We probably look to decrease our office size by about 35%. So there's a lot of efficiencies to be gained, but I think it's a matter of, you know, when the timing is right. And we received a bid for about $5 million on that complex. The net effect was about $3 million over two years when we had to pay rent back. It just wasn't, in our opinion, a good offer. So we'll continue to assess that, but I would think, you know, in the next year or two, we may reissue that notice of sale and see how it goes.
Great, thank you. I know it's hopefully a prime piece of real estate for river revitalization.
I think so. Yeah, I mean, 15 acres or 14 and a half acres and 1,100-foot of river frontage is pretty good.
Great, thank you.
Don't forget to turn your mics off. Commissioner Antor?
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, Steve.
Good morning.
I think over the years, I've gotten more calls about the road commission, and just little oddball jobs that people are inquiring about than any other department. And every time I call, it's amazing to me how quickly, and I know this isn't just because I'm calling, but I never hear anything negative about the road commissions. As a matter of fact, just the opposite. I think people had such a low bar based on what goes on around the rest of the state. It used to be death taxes and, you know, road commissioners are going to be leaning on their shovels. But I so appreciate that, because I know incredibly hard the job is, especially over the winter time. And you mentioned something about the Class A roads and the load limits. What, how do you prioritize those areas? I'm assuming you wait until an area gets degraded to the point where you're not ripping up a new road to get to a Class A level. Is that part of the priority process, or is it based strictly on commercial use? How do you kind of piece that together?
Yeah, there's a lot of factors that enter into our decision to place a road in our budget. It could be driven by traffic volumes and congestion. It could be driven primarily by just the condition, where we see in communication with our townships, perhaps changes in land use development. Sometimes, it's just the availability of funding. We rely on a lot of federal grants to do some of our major road construction, heavy-duty road construction work, the kind of projects that you're talking about. Those dollars sort of trickle into this area. We work collaboratively with the other cities to decide where the priorities are. So sometimes, we have a project that needs to get done, but the grant fund isn't coming for another three, four years. So sometimes, we're doing some minor improvements. We may actually chip-seal the road to get another three, four years of safe travel on it before then we can rip it up and repave it. So a lot of different factors enter into that. In our long-range plan, we've identified out about 10 years, some of those priority corridors. But even with that, we're only doing probably about three miles a year. We need to more than double, probably triple that, to eliminate the seasonal weight restrictions on those 114 miles. So again, with additional dollars, we see that as a major need, as well as just good old-fashioned proactive routine maintenance. With the last gas tax increase, fuel tax increase of 2015, we said emphatically that 25 cents out of every dollar of those additional dollars are growing into routine maintenance. You can't maintain a good road in good condition without good routine maintenance. You got to clean the ditches out. You got to get the culverts cleaned out. You got to trim the dead trees and keep them safe. So there's a lot of routine maintenance things that people don't see but exist within that corridor that need to be addressed. And so we put additional dollars into that kind of work as well.
Could I follow up real quick?
Sure.
Thank you. Just the other thing about the, we have Parks Commission needs new storage space, or new central location to operate out of, and so does the road commission. And I've always thought, you know, a lot of what they do are similar as far as space for equipment and so forth. And I was just wondering, it might be a good idea to look at something that could provide for both, as opposed to buying two separate tracts of land or two different projects. They both do similar things. A lot of it's storage, so just something to look at in the future. I don't know if you'd like that, Steve, but I think it'd be a good idea to.
Well, we used to house the parks, so.
Yeah. Thank you.
We have a lot of commissioners who have questions, so keeping with the time, we'll try to speed things along here. Commissioner Morgan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have two really quick questions. Hey, thanks to your organization and your staff. I think it's a Class A group, from the board on down. I've been working with them for a long time. But I just wanted to point out that not only do you respond to the residents, you also help out the airport. You collaborate with the airport. We're growing out there, and sometimes we needed your expertise. Thank you for that, and thank you for your willingness to share that. Second thing is, I wanted to ask real quickly about the sharing, the cost-sharing program. Is that unique to Kent County with the townships?
It's much more unique than most. So we cost-share 50-50, or 55-45 on different projects. Depends on the nature. In many areas around the state, local townships are on their own in terms of, should they decide they want a road resurfaced or regravelled? So either the percentage is much lower or doesn't exist. So it's, yeah, quite unique here in Kent County that we have that type of cost-sharing program. The other thing that kind of sets us apart, too, is that either through county millage or township millage, it doesn't exist here in Kent County. It does in other parts of the state. You don't have to go very far. Alleghen has a pretty robust township millage that actually generates more dollars than their Act 51 allocation they get from the state. So everybody kind of does it a little bit different. So not necessarily being critical of what goes on, but it works well here in Kent County. And again, you know, you saw in that one slide, almost $6 million this year. And that's a $12 million program on our county local roads. And so we're proud of that.
Another unique program to Kent County. Thanks, Steve.
You bet.
Commissioner Ponstein?
Thank you, Chair Bolter. Stephen, Cindy's introduction of you, she said that she wanted the road commission to be nimble. And I hear that word all the time now, that organizations have to be nimble. I'm not too concerned about the past or present, but what does a nimble road commission look like in the future, when how we're going to be getting from A to B is going to drastically change?
Well, a couple of things come to mind, I guess. Nimble in that, you know, the needs are constantly changing. I mentioned vehicle technology is changing. The type and size of vehicles that people are driving are different. The demands within these corridors is changing constantly. So I think we have to change with the times. I guess I consider nimble to be flexible or responsive to what's going on. So, and I think, just in terms of workforce, we've got a few millennials now that we've hired, and the culture of sort of the workforce and what they're looking forward to changes. So I think we just have to be responsive to sort of the changing culture, the changing demands within our network, both in terms of vehicle types, technology, demands for services. So I guess those are some of the things I think of.
And funding.
And funding, yeah.
Commissioner Bukowski?
Thank you, Chair. I'll try to keep my remarks to my 15 minutes. Yeah, because, I mean, it's nothing but great praise for you and your department. We've worked together for a long time. We've sat on different committees together and have advocated for, you know, increased funding. So nothing but thanks for all your hard work on that stuff. Yeah, I mean, to try to limit myself to one, when you look at that 90% goal, good or fair, you know, and when you hear the rest of your story, I mean, we're envious of almost nobody when it relates to unfunded liabilities. And then we all were gassed when you said 0% OPEB, you know, so now we have a little bit of envy, you know. So, and, but then when you hear of all the other road commissions, you know, 0% bridges who are deficient, I mean, and you're on track to hit 90% good or fair, you know, but what are the cost differentials so that if or when additional dollars come from land scene, does the 90% go to 95, or does the part that fair becomes more good? You know, where, like, do you have all those cost curves figured out in the sense of, yeah, will that money be well-spent in Kent County? Because right now, it seems like you don't need any more.
I don't think that's what he's saying.
If that's the impression I have, I have failed.
I'm pretty sure he's not saying that.
I have failed in my messaging, no.
Yeah.
Again, there's more work to be done. And again, I caution folks when we talk about 90-10. That represents sort of the surface.
Right.
So you've got a new shingle on the roof, but yet it looks great, water's running off, but maybe underneath, you've got some structural issues that need to get fixed.
Right.
We've got some structural issues in Kent County that need to be fixed in terms of eliminating those seasonal weight restrictions on those 115 miles, 114 miles.
Right.
So when we talk about 90-10, it doesn't necessarily deal with that structural capacity. So, and there's other things in terms of routine maintenance. Certainly, changing technology and what's going on with, you know, the advent of the autonomous vehicle. More technology needs to go. But, yeah, I think one of the things that you could say contributes to the fact that we are on track to get to that 90-10 is the fact that dollars come to Kent County, more of those, or a larger percentage of those dollars goes to work on the roads. Not only virtually eliminate our OPEB liability, but we eliminated our pension back in 85. So we, the staff and the Board of the Road Commission have inherited a great legacy of sound financial management. So when we look at our fringe rate, for example, it's the lowest of virtually any local government, Michigan. I mean, where it's like 62%, 63%. And that, that means that dollars come here, more of the, a larger percentage of those dollars goes to work on the roads and routine maintenance and things like that.
All right, thanks.
Commissioner Steck?
Thank you, Chair Bolter. Good morning, Steve.
Good morning.
Thank you for your commitment to excellence in everything that you do.
Thank you.
And welcome, Rob. You're like the gift that keeps on giving. My question is pertaining to what you envision are the challenges as we move to this autonomous environment. You talked about the technology changes and what may have to happen in some of the signaling. Are there road surface changes? Are there other things that we need to be planning for as we move appears inevitably towards that technology?
Well, I'd be interested in riding in an autonomous vehicle in the middle of a snowstorm. I don't know how that works. But, I mean, when I think about the deployment of infrastructure and the wireless communication, I get all that. But, you know, when we're dealing with snow and ice conditions and, you know, snow falling and things like that, I wonder how that will be dealt with, quite honestly. But I don't see any probably major changes in terms of how we construct roads or any of that. I don't see that there's a need for a lot of technology in the road. I mean, there's already technology at intersections, for example. There's wires and loop detectors and things like that that are already built into many of these intersections. But probably, most of the communication will happen wirelessly. One of the concerns that we have is, and this has been an issue here in the last few years, is about small cell telecommunications, and a huge amount of new infrastructure that's coming into the right-of-way. And the industry has been given a lot of latitude, which means they've taken away a lot of our ability to restrict and to govern the location and the construction of those. Concerned about future maintenance of that infrastructure and what's going to happen in terms of just the amount of poles or the amount of equipment that's going to go into these rights-of-way. It's a huge concern, not only here in Kent County, but statewide, nationally. In order to have that saturation of communication, wireless communication, there's a lot of infrastructure that needs to go into the right-of-way. So working with the industry to regulate that, to appropriately locate that, is going to be a challenge going forward.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Oh, Commissioner Wooden?
Thank you, Chair. I'll be very brief. First, very glad to see that the first priority in the strategic plan is to maintain our roads and to reach that goal that you're already saying that we're going to reach by 2025, and that's great. The reason I brought it up was there was a story in Cranes, Detroit just last weekend about another county that's struggling to reach their maintenance because there's strain to expand road infrastructure due to development and increased density in areas that used to not have such. In the county road commission, is that tension there at all in any way, and how is that tension addressed between needing to maintain our existing road infrastructure and potentially meeting the needs of increased road use due to increased development in our road commission service area?
Yeah, I think part of that, building that good relationship with the townships, is that there's a lot of communication as suburban development occurs, and kind of characterize it as that. I think with the residents, there's always fears of as land develops, there's going to be more traffic, traffic is going to be traveling too fast. So we have to deal with that quite a bit. So it ends up being usually slight improvements, if you will, additional turn lanes or. So it ends up being usually slight improvements, if you will, additional turn lanes or bypass lanes. But I don't know that anybody hasn't driven here in Kent County and noticed that there's just a lot more cars on the road. I mean, it's everywhere. And so I guess looking out in the future, I don't see us turning a lot of two-lane roadways into four-lane roadways or three-lane roadways. I mean, there may be some of that, but it's more dealing with kind of intersection congestion and just, you know, making sure that we maintain these corridors as safe as possible. But I think there's just going to be a continual increase in the volume of traffic, and it's something that, well, if you're as old as I am, it's harder to get used to because we didn't have that much traffic on 4 Mile and now we have all this traffic, or 5 Mile, whatever. It's just something I think we'll eventually just, we'll see on the network. That said, we constantly monitor traffic volumes. We're taking traffic volume counts constantly. We're taking speed studies constantly. So we're on top of it. We're monitoring it, just like we rate the condition of each road each year. So we're monitoring what's going on, but we're just seeing just sort of a natural buildup of traffic volumes and, yeah, lane improvements here and there will probably be necessary. But I don't see a lot of major corridor widening in the future.
Thank you very much. That's great. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? All right, thank you, Steve. Thank you, Cindy.
Thank you.
Thank you, Board.
I forgot to hit the last slide, but anyway.
I was rushing you too much, right?
I was so scared.
My fault. My fault.
So we're working to keep Kent County moving. Contact us, again, Twitter, Facebook, or you can just call. Thank you.
Thank you. Great, great presentation. We are on to item six, public comment. Do we have a public comment today from anyone?
Regarding the agenda.
Regarding the agenda. All right, seeing none, we are on to item seven, consent agenda. I'll call on Commissioner Coleman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move the consent agenda.
Moved by Commissioner Coleman, support by-
Support.
Commissioner Jones. Questions or comments on the consent agenda? All right, this is a roll call. I will call on Mr. McCumber.
On the consent agenda, Commissioner Wooden.
Yes.
Womack. Voorhees.
Yes.
Bonk. Talon.
Yes.
Vice Chair Steck.
Yes.
Commissioner Sparks.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Salfeld.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Hennessy. Bukowski.
Yes.
Brevi.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have 16 yeas, 0 nays. The consent agenda is adopted.
Thank you so much. We're on to item eight, resolutions. I'll call on Commissioner Melton for resolution A.
Thank you, Chair. I move resolution 6131947, as it says in our resolution, the purchasing of development rights.
All right, moved by Commissioner Melton, support by-
Support.
Commissioner Jones. Questions or comments on this? Commissioner Coleman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The members of the legislative committee bear with me as I repeat myself from that committee, but the selection criteria under this motion are thorough, thoughtful, and it's a fair assessment methodology. I think it's a good assessment methodology. I will be voting no, however, because I still think that the system is flawed, you know, fundamentally with the part where it's putting the restriction on these properties for all eternity. So for that reason, I'm voting no.
Thank you, Commissioner Coleman. Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. And Commissioner Coleman, I mean, we disagree on this. I mean, the restrictions are there to ensure that farmland will be there 100 years from now. I would hope that we could be forward-looking to see that maybe in the future, two of the most important things they're going to need is food and water. And everything that we do and the ones after us, leading up to that 100-year period, is going to be critical. Because by not doing anything, we're ensuring that that farmland won't be there in 100 years.
Commissioner Voorhees.
Madam Chair, I would request a roll call vote on this issue.
Okay. Commissioner Morgan.
Press my button. Thank you, Madam Chair. The criteria has been similar to the criteria we passed over the last several years, right? Nothing's changed as far as the criteria goes.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I'd like to also address what Commissioner, excuse me, what you guys have been talking about here. And, you know, if a landowner sells his property, that's for perpetuity also. He can't get it back. That's a legacy decision. And it's, you know, at least with the PDR program, you can sell your property, but it has to remain in ag. That's the restriction. So either way, if you sell it or protect it, that's forever. So that's my only point. Thank you.
Commissioner Wooden.
Thank you, Chair. In this discussion, I'm just taking it back, taking it back to the previous news story I brought up in our road commission presentation about another county struggling to maintain its current road infrastructure because of un-thought-out development. And, you know, in the end, development and growth is great, but growth without vision costs the community in the long term. And so the idea of supporting this feeds into preventing that from happening. And just wanted to put that on the record and thank Commissioners Ponstein and Antor for their comments. Thank you.
Commissioner Talon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to express concurrence with Commissioner Coleman's first part of what he said. And that is to, again, note the thoughtfulness, the intentionality, the incorporation of best practices into these priorities. And we've seen that year after year. They continue, they haven't changed a lot in the last few years, but over the long period, they have been tweaked and improved. So it does move us toward, in the direction of good land use planning for our county. So I wanted to concur with that piece of the remarks. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to remind Commissioners, this is not on the program itself. It's just the selection criteria that we are voting on today. Commissioner Salfeld.
That was the point I was going to make. I was going to say that I will support this for that reason. I do have a concern as it relates to funding, but since that's not part of this, I will save that for later.
Great. Questions, comments on the criteria in the resolution? All right, seeing none, we have a request for a roll call vote. Mr. McCumber, will you please call the roll?
On resolution 6131947, Commissioners Wooden.
Yes.
Womack. Voorhees.
No.
Bonk. Talon.
Yes.
Vice Chair Steck.
Yes.
Commissioner Sparks.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Salfeld.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Coleman.
No.
Jones.
Yes.
Hennessy. Bukowski.
Yes.
Brevi.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have four yeas, two nays. The resolution is adopted.
Thank you so much. We are on-
Oh, 14.
You still would have been able to-
Yeah. It passed.
Sorry about that.
All right, we're on to resolution B, federal legislative priorities. I'll call on Commissioner Coleman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move resolution 48, the federal legislative priorities.
Moved by Commissioner Coleman, support by Commissioner Voorhees. Any questions, comments on this? Commissioner Steck.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. First, I want to acknowledge my colleagues as we embark for the first time in a process of identifying federal legislative priorities. My understanding, we've not done that previously, though we have certainly done that in the state legislative priority conversation. In some sense, it's sort of like Christmas. Now we open the door and we have this whole spectrum of federal issues that we can now play with. And I'm sure as we put our heads together, there are hundreds of issues that can surface, and we all have our favorites. So I appreciate the process here, which has narrowed it down to relatively few, but acknowledging that there is much conversation yet on the multitude of other issues and whether they ultimately land on the list of positions that we take as a county remains to be seen. I call attention to the fact that there are a number of items here that are on the short list at the end that will be addressed with further conversations. Some of that will be addressed with administration later on this week even. So, again, appreciate that there's a lot of discussion here. There is a lot of consideration. This is a small tip of the iceberg of all the issues that are out there, but I think it's a very credible start as we move into the federal priorities issue.
Thank you. Vice Chair Steck, questions, comments? Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. There was a little discussion of maybe that we were going outside our scope of this position, and one of it had to deal with the airport and the air traffic control tower. And I think what people got to remember, at the end of the day, when we spun off the airport, we spun off who operates it. I mean, that's still a viable county asset, and it's an asset that the county owns, not the airport authority. So I just want to keep in mind when conversations like that come up, is that that's an investment out there. And it's a critical investment, and I'm sure if we let that go to pieces and not, you know, advocate for that, I don't know how the folks in New York would look at that county that's not upkeeping their assets and what risk that would have maybe to our AAA bond rating.
Commissioner Wooden, did you have your hand up? Commissioner Morgan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate those comments, Commissioner Ponstein. Some of the issues we're dealing with today is because we didn't keep our eye on the ball years ago. So we're not going to, we're not going to make the same mistakes we've made in the past as far as towers go and our infrastructure. And Kent County does own the infrastructure and the assets out there, and I just appreciate the support of this board as we continue to set records. That's my report. Thanks.
So we can skip miscellaneous report? Okay. Just checking. Any other questions or comments? All right, seeing none, this is not a roll call vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. On to resolution C. I will call on Commissioner Brevi.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. I move resolution 49 of today's date, the lead hazard control community outreach project from the Health Department.
Moved by Commissioner Brevi, support by Commissioner Bukowski. Questions or comments? Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Madam Chair. As talked about in finance, I still think that, you know, right now, everybody's pretty aware of the lead problems we have in this county. It's kind of like Coca-Cola doing a commercial. I don't think we really need to do it. I know it's a requirement that we need to do this educational component, but, well, I sure would like to see that money being used just for remediation. And I know there's, you know, probably nobody can comment on that because it's a requirement of this grant, but I think that, I still think that money could be better spent than talking about a problem we all know exists. Let's get somebody in the homes and take it out.
Commissioner Coleman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I actually have the opposite opinion. I think that this educational community outreach is probably the more effective use per dollar in terms of actually reducing the elevated blood lead levels in kids in our community. That educational efforts can reach a broader part of the at-risk population, and the expense level of actual full remediation is so high that the dollars don't go very far in that approach.
Commissioner Talon.
Just a similar follow-up, I think. I'm kind of shocked at the thought that we all know this is a problem. When I've sat in public meetings, what I've heard from members of our community is that not everybody does understand or recognize the extent of the problem. So I think this is a really critical piece of work that needs to happen so that, you know, families that are renting for a third time a property that has resulted in kids being poisoned, recognize that because that clearly is not being known by everyone at this point in time. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Brevi.
Thank you, Chair. You know, I would agree. I feel like, you know, education is definitely an important component of, you know, addressing the population to the issues of lead in our community. And this was one of the key components in the lead task force recommendations was to provide education. And it can be, you know, education on how to repair your home or, you know, what lead is and how it affects our children. So I think this is a really key component to the lead task force recommendations, and, you know, it's definitely a couple steps in the right direction to addressing lead in our community.
Any other questions, comments? Commissioner Wooden.
Thank you, Chair. I would just add that, you know, one of the reasons I do see the value in this is often in the rental market, unfortunately, our landlords are not disclosing the lead health hazards to their renters. And because it is a, you know, much like it's a seller's market, it's a landlord's market, there's not necessarily the same accountability that should be involved with disclosing lead health hazards. So having this in place is important. I would echo Commissioner Antor's concerns, though, that, you know, in the end, outreach only goes so far, and the need to tackle these, especially the repeat offenders, is important. This is one step of many steps that we've been already taking and will be taking, and that's why I'll be voting in favor.
Any other questions or comments on this issue? I just have one. The hurdle that I've been seeing is just everybody thinks lead poisoning is water. So any and all education we can get to continue to change that mindset. I know Lansing continues to fund large grants for water contamination, but not as much paint contamination, which is our issue here. So I don't know if that's going to address this, but even if one little, small percentage of it does, that just contributes to helping that along. So with that, this is a roll call. Commissioner, or, I'm sorry, Deputy Clerk McCumber.
On resolution 6131949, Commissioners Wooden.
Yes.
Womack. Voorhees.
Yes.
Bonk. Talon.
Yes.
Vice Chair Steck.
Yes.
Commissioner Sparks.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Salfeld.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Hennessy. Bukowski.
Yes.
Brevi.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
And Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have 16 yeas, 0 nays. The resolution is adopted.
Thank you so much. We're on to resolution D. I'll call on Commissioner Brevi.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. I move resolution 50 of today's date, the nurse family partnership expansion, adding a funding and a position from the Health Department.
Support.
Moved by Commissioner Brevi. Sorry, I didn't see that. Support by Commissioner Wooden. Questions or comments? All right, seeing none. Adam, you don't have to come up. This is a roll call vote.
On resolution 6131950, Commissioner Wooden.
Yes.
Womack. Voorhees.
Yes.
Bonk. Talon.
Yes.
Vice Chair Steck.
Yes.
Commissioner Sparks.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Salfeld.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Bukowski.
Yes.
Breevy.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Chair Bolter.
Yes.
And Chair, you have 16 yays, zero nays. The resolution is adopted.
Thank you. On to Resolution EA. Call on Commissioner Bukowski.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to move Resolution 51 of today's date, the Kent County Community Action Budget Weatherization Program and Adding of a New Position.
Moved by Commissioner Bukowski. Support by Commissioner Sparks. Questions or comments? All right, seeing none, this is a roll call. Mr. McCumber.
On Resolution 613-1951, Commissioners Wooden.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Bonk.
Yes.
Chair Steck.
Yes.
Commissioner Sparks.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Saulfeld.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Bukowski.
Yes.
Breevy.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have 16 yes votes, zero nay votes. Resolution is adopted.
Thank you. We are on to Item 9, Public Comment on General County Matters. Anyone wishing to speak, please come up. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Julie Stefan. I'm in Plainfield Township, and for some reason, I am nervous as heck today. So bear with me. I am here to insist that the Kent County Animal Shelter become a no-kill shelter, and for me to insist that, I think it's important that you all know what it is. And I really hate the term "no-kill" because any sane person would reason that a no-kill shelter means that there's no killing there, and that is not true. What it means, short answer, is a 90% live release rate. So, no-kill does not mean that they don't kill. It means that nine out of 10 animals leave either through transfer to rescues, through adoption, or return to owners. In 2016, Kent County Animal Shelter's live release rate was 53%. In 2017, the live release rate was 61%, and the current Michigan average is 88%. So Kent County can do better. They can. The situations where a no-kill shelter would kill an animal, euthanasia, meaning a humane, moral death, would be major medical. So, medical where the animal is suffering beyond what can be treated. So, for example, if an animal needs a leg amputated, that is not a reason to kill in a no-kill shelter, because you can fix a limb, you can amputate a limb. It might cost money, and it might take time, but it's something that can be done. If money is the issue at a no-kill shelter, you raise more money. You fundraise, you come up with creative ideas to make the funding happen, as opposed to simply just saying, "We're going to kill all of the animals that don't... We don't have the money to treat." If there is extreme aggression, that is obviously a good reason to put an animal down, but we have to remember what I've talked about before, that shelter behavior does not indicate home behavior. So before we say an animal is extremely aggressive, we need to do what we can for that animal to show whether the aggression is simply shelter-based, or whether it is truly an animal that should be put down for the good of the public. More than just numbers, no-kill is an attitude, and an attitude where life matters more than money, more than convenience, more than laziness, more than anything else, and it's treating animals as if their lives matter and fighting for them even when it's difficult. So how can Kent County achieve this? And the main thing is, money can't be the excuse. So if we need to fundraise, then get the community involved, and we can do that. We can talk way more about that, about how I think the community could help fundraise for the shelter. We can work toward more owner reunions. We can work toward more transfers to the good rescues that are here in town that are willing to help. This is a complicated topic. If anyone has any questions about it, please feel free to email me, but I hope to see Kent County go in this direction in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Any other public comment today? All right, seeing none, we are on to Item 10, Commissioner Reports. Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, Chair. I think one of the pieces that I really took out of our board retreat that we had is the importance of reports, because this is our opportunity to take all the time that we have, our assigned committees, and report back, and I feel that what I know is the highlights everyone here should know. So I'm going to start, because it has been a busy early month of June. Let's start with Grand Valley Metro Council. We had a report from the Critical Infrastructure Protection Specialist from the Michigan State Police, and how they are working to connect information, and how they also have a program similar to "OK to Say," so when you see things, you can report. I thought that was a very good presentation, and that's also online. I'd encourage everyone to watch it. Then I had the Convention and Arena Authority Liaison Committee meeting, where we spent quite a bit of time discussing and seeing some improvements that can happen in front of Van Andel. DGRI is very active in that as well, and I am very excited about how that can improve that way, not only out at the front, but along the alleyway. And then I was at the Supervisors Meeting, because I am now the Kent County Supervisors Association rep, and there is discussion about a meeting with the Kent County Board of Commissioners and them in September. I know details are to be determined, and Wayman is leading that. And they also had a presentation from Matt, from our Emergency Communications Center, from the Kent County Sheriff's Office, and a lot of discussion was spent on 911 funding and how that is progressing, and what they hope to accomplish down the road. So that's what I had for my reports.
Commissioner Talon.
Thank you, Chair. Brief report on yesterday's Grand Rapids Downtown Development Authority meeting. We approved a contract renewal with Block by Block, which is the organization that provides the downtown ambassador services. If you visit downtown, they are the folks that are in the teal shirts providing hospitality services, as well as the clean team, which you may not see as much when you visit downtown, but you will see the results of their work if you visit downtown. They do a tremendous job of keeping it looking beautiful and well picked up. We also had a visit from our colleague, Commissioner Bukowski, who filled us in, and we ended up approving a contract to learn more about how to make downtown more accessible, and approved that work, which will be happening over the next year. And lastly, just to let you know that there is... I think I may have mentioned it before, but there's significant planning going on right now to change the area in front of the Van Andel Arena, which is pretty stark right now, and to make it more people-friendly. We were updated yesterday that this planning work is about 90% complete. Hopefully, in the next year, we'll be able to start implementing some of that, as well as the next phase of that is going to be improvements to that, call it an alleyway, next to the... To the east of the Van Andel Arena, and making that more people-friendly. So, a lot of changes going on there around the Van Andel Arena to make it less stark for visitors coming in. Thank you.
Commissioner Steck.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. I have a point of order first. I was going to do my best to do this report before the airport report, but Commissioner Morgan went out of order to give his report, and once again, has beat me to the punch. Other than that, my report on a couple of issues. The first is the LRE, Lecture Regional Entity Report. Again, we had submitted our response, our formal response, to the state in answering the various issues that they had raised in their notice letter. That report essentially had asked the state to endorse and allow the new proposed restructuring of the lecture entity to proceed. That is the structure with the Beacon Health Options Partnership. We do anticipate that we'll hear something formally from them relatively soon at this point, probably within a week, so we will see where that goes. Second, with respect to Network 180. Network 180 has undertaken its strategic plan to essentially strengthen and restructure its service administration process. That does involve some changes in how Network 180 functions. It will involve some changes in our relationship with some of our providers. Nobody likes change, and so there will likely be some responses, and so to the extent that any of you hear issues coming back, I would encourage you to reach out to me, or reach out to Commissioner Talon, who is also well aware of all of these changes. But it is really intended to allow our system to be functioning more effectively, more equitably, in how we administer the unfortunately limited dollars we have to apply. So that will continue. And then finally, with respect to that report from the Lecture Regional Entity, it is available. It's a public document. If anyone wishes to see it, there is actually a summary page in the front, so you can read it without having to read all 30 pages. So I encourage you to reach out to me if you want a copy. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Morgan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The other two committees I sit on, one is the Central Dispatch Authority. I just wanted to let my colleagues know that the tower network plan should be tested probably the end of this year, or the beginning of next, so we can start looking forward to that 800 platform, which I think would vastly improve our system. As far as this Proof of Concepts Committee meeting I'm on, they're still in the data collection phase, and so I don't have much to report on that. But when I have something worthwhile, I'll be reporting it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other official reports? Commissioner Wooden.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Area Agency on Aging of West Michigan's Advisory Council met earlier this month, or earlier last month, and for the past few months, most of their work has been regarding the auto no-fault issue, now that that has been, for lack of a better word, resolved. You know, their attention is now shifting more back towards home care workers in the budgetary process, but also they... The AAA of West Michigan has released their 2019 Needs Assessment. I can distribute that through PAM to everyone. The key findings are on the first page, and they will be... They also, I believe, went through the Advisory Council, hasn't yet been approved by the board, but their three-year action plan was reviewed by the Advisory Council. I don't know if that's been approved by the board yet. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other reports? All right, we're on to Item 11, Miscellaneous. Commissioner Miscellaneous today. Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Chair. Just want to take another bite at this apple as far as some of our funding. You know, I like to suggest, I put lead and PFAS in the same kind of general arena, and I think if somebody came along and said, "We need to start advertising PFAS by buying billboards and so forth," I would be just as, you know, opposed to that, because we've been on lead for forever. I mean, ever since Flint, that's been on our radar screen. And I guess my point is, if we're going to try to educate people, or re-educate them, what's our responsibility then? Are we saying that we're not going to be responsible for any remediation? Or, you know, what's the end game? Are we still leaving it up to the people to take care of their problems, or are we supposed to help them? I know there was a group in here expecting us to... I think they were looking at remediation and not just education, and I'm not sure where we're at on that. But again, I think, you know, I just think it's wasted money, and I think people, when they look at government, they don't like seeing waste money. And I do hold true that $100,000 could be much better spent hitting those area codes. I don't care if it's knocking on doors and giving them cards and say, "You have a potential problem here." I just don't understand what happens after that. Do they go to their landlord, or the landlord? And it's between those two, or is it part of what we do as county government?
And I think maybe Commissioner Breevy and you can get together, because there's a whole plan in place, so.
Thank you.
That'd be great. Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. I had an opportunity to go to the John Ball Zoo Member Night the other night, and if anyone hasn't been to the zoo in a while, I suggest you do it. One of the exhibits I normally don't go through is Reptiles and Snakes exhibit, but I did walk through it. And, you know, we talked about paint earlier in the CIP, what a fresh coat of paint does, but what struck me is just what the exhibits look like now. And I called the zoo and asked what was different, and they partnered with colleges, schools, and had the students come in and paint the background of these. That used to just be a solid blank cover to more look like their natural habitat. So, I mean, that's just one little thing, but what's going on in the zoo over the past four, five years has just been, you know, remarkable. There's a few new exhibits. If you like those little meerkats that you saw on Discovery years ago, there's an exhibit for that. So, if you don't support the zoo, it's still a great place just to take a walk if you need time away. And then I just wanted to add, tomorrow morning, there's one business in town that I've really admired for a long time, and in Lansing, there's talk about the bottle bill. What we're going to be doing, should we expand it, should it go away? The state of Michigan has got one of the most successful bottle bills in the nation. We recover almost 94% of the bottles that go into that collection process. The driver behind that is a Kent County business, and it's Chopin Recycling. And they have set up, you know, if you see the bottle returns in stores, that's all part of their infrastructure. And tomorrow morning, I have asked that the Michigan Association of Counties Environment Committee, which Commissioner Sparks and I sit on, to take a tour of that facility. They're welcoming us with their open arms. I'm also giving an invite to any Kent County Commissioner, if you want to do this. The meeting's only going to be maybe two hours at the most, but you'll get a tour of their facility, what they do, why, what they do, and what we do in Michigan is different than other states, and it's a great educational, especially if you're still unsure the ins and out of the bottle bill, how it began, and where it's going. So I pass that invite out to you. I'm happy that the Michigan Association of Counties and other commissioners will be in Kent County to see one of our businesses that not only does it different, but is second to none.
Commissioner Ponstein, what time was that again?
10:00.
All right, Commissioner Breevy.
Thank you, Chair. I have two quick items. The first one, residents in the southeast part of the county should be or have already received a notice from DPW about the recycling area in Kentwood closing, and that was first announced, I think, back at the end of April. But it's closing, there was, you know, contamination, not because the things were contaminated, but people were putting trash in the recycle bins, and, you know, it just wasn't super cost-effective. So, trying to work on saving our residents even more money in being effective, running effective government, they decided to close it and encourage residents to sign up with their own recycling, a private recycling company, which those are more prevalent now than what they were 12 years ago when the plant opened up. So, it's only, you know, usually a few dollars a month, so just remind your constituents that is an option if they live, you know, outside of the city of Grand Rapids. So, that's one thing, and then that will be closing at the end of June. The next item I have, my alma mater, South Christian High School, the girls' soccer team is headed to state finals tomorrow, so I wish them the best and hope they are successful and come back with a win.
Great. Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, Chair. I just had a couple of things. We just had our work session on the first CIP look, and Wayman, you shared that you're interested in listening and getting additional feedback. One of the pieces that I think, since I've been here, which is five years, is our bathroom situation in this building is not overly handicap accessible. And I didn't see that on the list. We had the list for not only this year, but we had the list for future years. We have a whole floor that doesn't have restrooms on it, and as a commissioner, I don't think that's okay. So I would really like to encourage you to sit with Al, to, even if it's in the future, I'd like to see a placeholder for some type of project, because when I was first started here, it was, well, the answer I had is, "We're not sure about our future plans in this building." I don't foresee in the crystal ball us leaving this building. Therefore, I really think that these projects need to be looked at one more time, if you could, for our next review. And I just wanted to put that in. If you have some other good reasons why it just isn't feasible, then I just want to know. And the other piece I have is being active in the West Michigan Sports Commission, along with Commissioner Breevy. They do have the Summer Games, June 20th through the 23rd. The 21st is the first opening... 21st opening ceremonies at Fifth Third Ballpark. They have the Flip Out Trampoline Show. They have the Athlete Parade, which is so moving to watch the families and the kids come in as they get ready for their competitions. And they have a 1968 Olympic gold medalist who will be present as well. And kudos to Mike Gusweiler, who is putting his time where his mouth is in this event. He is participating personally in 10 sports to celebrate the 10 years of the West Michigan Sports Commission. And for that, I really commend him, because I'm glad I didn't get that challenge as a board member. That would be quite a stretch. So good for him for finding those and engaging.
Which events?
They're actually listed in the newsletter.
Okay. Yeah. Commissioner Bukowski.
Thank you, Chair. Just as a forewarning, I'll send via PAM just some... Thank you Chair. Just as a forewarning, I'll send via PAM, just some, there's a budget issue in Lansing. You know, it only is in the House budget. Who knows where it'll go. But there are just some very significant cuts to public transportation that were proposed. Basically, robbing Peter to pay Paul, trying to put more dollars into roads, reducing transit funding back to 2005 levels. I hope it goes without saying, I am totally in favor of more effectiveness for public transportation. I could cite the 1999 study by Mayor Hardiman. That's how old it is. It was Mayor Hardiman and John Kennedy about how can we improve the effectiveness, and so we need to be doing that. What was proposed, doesn't. And to say that public transportation does have a huge impact on what we do, as I like to say in the community, transit is almost no one's number-one issue, it is everybody's number-two. Every service, the number-one barrier, or the number-two barrier, is transportation. People can't get to the service. And this just is such a backwards movement, and so I'll send that information out. Of course, the folks in the Senate like to tell how they have to babysit the House, so hopefully the Senate will take care of this issue coming out of the House, and we'll leave it at that for now. So I'll send that information along.
Commissioner Skaggs?
Thank you Chair. I just wanted to congratulate the student athletes, parents, and coaches of the East Grand Rapids Girls Lacrosse Team on their state championship. If you're keeping count, and we are, that's 135 state championships for East Grand Rapids High School, the most of any high school in the state of Michigan.
Wow. Yeah.
Thank you Chair. I wanted to take a quick second to recognize my oldest son, Isaac, who came with me this morning. And then a brief moment, since Isaac's here, to actually quibble with something my colleague, Commissioner Bukowski, said earlier. And actually, I think we 100% agree on this, is that you said that if or when money comes from Lansing. But I think it's important to, you know, I know it's a shortcut phrase, but it's important to remember that, you know, money doesn't come from Lansing. It comes from that young family, you know, with a low income in Grand Rapids. It comes from, you know, the single mom, you know, working three jobs in Wyoming, you know, trying to make ends meet, and it comes from the grandparents in Byron Center that are on a fixed income. So, we may use the shortcut phrase of, you know, money coming from Lansing, but that's not where money comes from, that we're talking about.
Good point. Commissioner Melton?
Thank you Chair. Just a couple things. Kentwood graduated the most students ever in the history of the high school, 608 graduates, and well over 10% of them were a 3.75 grade point average, or higher. And the principal did something this year. I don't know why we didn't do it a long time ago. It was brilliant. He did a country roll call. How often does that happen? And he roll-called 60 countries. 60 countries graduated from East Kentwood High School this year, and it was just absolutely phenomenal. And I know we've seen in the news STEM students around the country who are using their talents to do things for persons. And the students at Crestwood Middle School actually used their talents and time to put together a walking device for a young student in that Crestwood District. And I just, those are things we don't get to read about very often. So, we're in good hands. And, oh, Isaac is hiding, but our up-and-coming persons, we're in good hands with students like this. Very exciting news.
Great. Any other miscellaneous? Commissioner Wooden?
Thank you Chair. For starters, I just want to offer my sympathies to Commissioner Coleman's son for that point of embarrassment, but, you know, my dad embarrassed me on my first meeting here, so I can empathize for that a lot. I just wanted to let everyone know, in case you didn't know already, that the Grand Rapids Pride Festival is going to be this Saturday at Calder Plaza. I'll hope to be there. I hope to see many of you there. And aside from that, thanks to many of the comments made during today's miscellaneous, especially accessible bathrooms, public transportation. And congratulations again on racking up yet another championship. I remember hating hearing that number when I was at Catholic Central. I think I'll continue to hate it less, but thanks again for everyone for the longer meeting, and enjoy the rest of your day.
Any other miscellaneous today? Commissioner Sparks?
Commissioner Melton does have another, something that she likes.
I didn't want to take up too much time. I forgot. The boys' track team at East Kentwood just won their eighth straight state, we don't have as many as you, but eighth straight year of running. We might not do some things in Kentwood the way we should, but we run well.
Great. All right, seeing, oh, Commissioner Sparks?
Sorry, just gave away my time. I'd like to invite everyone out to the Asian Festival this weekend as well. We're going to have a wonderful time. We've got Pride going on, we've got the Asian Festival, the Polish Festival, is that Tuesday, Thursday? That passed? But just make sure that we stay involved. Kent County has so many great diverse entities, and resources, and organizations, so love living here. Thank you.
Any other miscellaneous? All right, seeing that, I will call in Commissioner Coleman for our motion to adjourn.
Thank you Madam Chair. I have moved to adjourn, subject to the call of the Chair, to Thursday, June 27th, at 8:30 a.m.
Moved by Commissioner Coleman. Support by Commissioner Jones. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Bones, we are adjourned.
I am Kent County.
I am Kent County.
We are 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 Kent County.
Ami Kent County.
Somos Kent County.
We are Kent County.
We are Kent County.
We are Kent County.
Oh yeah.